We'll go ahead and I want to call forth Pastor Janice from Greater Faith to lead us into invocation, and followed by that it will be Mr. Farnum for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you pray with me in that great and happy place? Father, we thank you for this day that you have made. We thank you for your grace, and we thank you for all of your mercies. We thank you for another opportunity to come together as a councilman, as a group to decide going forward and doing things to better Waynesville. We have to keep blessing, bless the hands, bless this meeting. We have to move however it is that we want to move. We have to keep blessing our great nation, our servicemen and women all over the world today fighting for our freedom and our way of life. We thank you, we bless you, we honor you, and it is in your Son Jesus's name that we do pray. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Farnum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'm going to open up our session for citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? All right. We'll go with Mr. Pritchard first. Just please state your name and address, and then we'll hit Mr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone. Keith Pritchard from 300 Highland Woods, Wayneville, Missouri. Just wanted to address the city council and thank them for the support in supporting the Secretary of the Army's Savviness to the Secretary of the Army Conference, which was held on Fort Leonard Wood, May 8 through 12. It was a fantastic opportunity for our city, state, region, and military base to show off what we do here. We had representatives from almost all 50 states and all U.S. territories here, to include the Secretary of the Army herself was here for two and a half days, the Chief of Staff, the Chief of the Army Reserve, Force Guard General Gary Brito, Training and Doctrine Command General, the Director of the Army National Guard from the Pentagon. We had the top civilian employee of the United States Military here from the Pentagon. And of course, in addition, our school system did an outstanding job, really our community did an outstanding job in representing Middle America, our Midwest values here, and how we support our military was just a really outstanding opportunity for Fort Leonard Wood and our region. I think it will have, it certainly has created and created a lot of activity and awareness inside the Pentagon of what we do, how we do it, and how well we do it here, and how it's supportive. We'll have after-action data available, which I'll provide to cities, both cities, later, which will talk about travel. How did they get here? How did they leave? How did they stay? How many rental cars did they have? How many buses did we use? How many meals did we buy? That's all being tracked by the Pentagon, and they'll provide it back to us. And that'd be helpful information on how to improve our airports, how to improve our delivery systems of all the goods and services that we all use every day, but just happen to be able to be used to support this conference. So I think the cities acknowledged that, the signs that they put up. They were acknowledged by the conference. They were acknowledged in communications by the United States Army. And the CASA office in the Pentagon asked for those City of Waynesville signs to be, one to be sent with them, which Doug provided me, and they're actually going to hang it in their CASA office for a while. So thank you all again. Great work.
I want to say thank you, Mr. Pritchard, for that entire event. It was a learning experience. It was a great experience. And just to see all of the causes and just the educational piece for the community and understanding the magnitude of the impact that you make for this region, I say thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Absolutely.
Dr. Jerry Brown, 1390 State Route F, Mayor Wilson, City Council. Mine's not quite as flirty as Mr. Pritchard, but I wanted to thank the city for reinstalling that convex mirror at the intersection of Hospital and South Lynn. That, some of the old timers know, is a very dangerous intersection, and has been down for quite some time, so I wanted to appreciate it reinstalled. I want to thank John Doyle and Jason with the city, that's the department, to get that installed. So again, thank you for the safety you created up there again.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. We have a special guest presentation this evening. Mr. Doyle, you want to introduce Mr. Tice?
Yes, so tonight we have Ty Smith, the City Attorney for the City of Richland, to discuss the E-911 agreement that currently is provided by E-911 to the City of Waynesville, Richland, Dixon, and Cocker.
May I address you from here?
Yes, sir.
You won't have any trouble hearing.
Can you hear?
But I just don't have the ability to stand. As you all are aware, E-911 has sent out a letter to the four cities of Cocker, Dixon, Richland, and Waynesville indicating that the current intergovernmental agreement would have to be modified. They, there were some price increases, and there was some issue with not doing utility outages. And so the City of Richland, and I introduce Harold Neese, our Mayor of Richland. He's attending this evening. Our mayor is Al Air, so he is good enough to attend. Our Board has authorized me to speak for the City of Richland and authorized me to take what action's necessary. After meetings with Mr. John and with participation with Cocker, we met with the E-911 folks, and I think the agreement is that they and their letter have indicated to us that they will, they want an answer by June 1 as to whether or not they're, they gave us several options for continuation of services at certain prices and discontinuation on certain of our events that we have. The main one is that our utilities outages, they don't want to do that anymore. We have three functions basically: warrant input, police dispatching, and utility outage calls. So we have discussed the formation of a statutory association among the cities to seek other alternatives. E-911 has indicated that they will continue services as they presently present themselves to January 1. So what I'm going to recommend is that the city send a lawyer, oh, send a lawyer, send a letter to E-911 thanking them for their services, indicating we're going to try to form a consortium and seek alternatives. And they asked them to continue services as in their letter to January 1. That gives us seven months to do what we have to do. The problem is we have a disparity in the age and effectiveness of our various dispatch systems. We have full dispatch systems in the county at a couple of sites, so we have to seek. So the main thing is we have to seek what kind of compatibility between the cities and the systems and the costs. And so the only thing we want to do now is simply send a letter to E-911 telling them to thank you for their services. Please continue until January 1, under the current contract as agreed, and their letter, and that we will seek other services as a consortium. That'll give us the time. It's very simple. They've done their job with it for us a long time. Probably time to move on now. Any questions? So I think I would recommend that you authorize the mayor, or John, or somebody to send that letter. I will prepare a proposed letter to present to you all for your consideration to send, and for the City of Richland to send, indicating that. And we'll also contact Dixon and Cocker. But again, the cities are a little bit of difference. They have one area, the input warrants and the city dispatching, but on the utility outage calls, Richland, Waynesville, and St. Robert too, but Richland and Waynesville provide full services: natural gas, electric, sewer, and water. Cocker Dixon only present sewer and water. So all you have to do is authorize somebody to send that letter, and we'll send it out, and then we'll start working to get something going and form our consortiums.
Okay. So I want to entertain a motion to send a letter to E-911 with our intention to move forward. So Mr. Liberty makes a motion, seconded by Mr. Hyatt. Discussion.
Then I have the dog now, then.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tice, to continue with the update.
You, the City of St. Robert, the City of Waynesville, and of course, I'm City Attorney for St. Robert also, have a combined animal control system with a dog kennel. And frankly, after I've worked on this case, I will tell you, folks, you've got a heck of an operation you just did with the voluntary. It has been very impressive to me. I've seen a lot of animal control systems, and most systems are set up to euthanize dogs after so long, and your system is so animal friendly, it's, I can't compliment you on the combined system here. In October of this year, there was a report from St. Robert PD where the, there were some dogs in a charge. And at the end of the day, what happened is we had a bunch of puppies that were underweight. The adults had been fighting, and those dogs were taken into custody. A criminal case is set up for a jury trial with the dogs on it. We have cared for those dogs in our combined system since October. The dogs are beautiful pit bulls. They're adult dogs now. They're very human friendly. They need to be adopted. So I agreed to represent everybody and file an action in court, ask the courts to allow us to take the dogs and adopt them. We appeared in front of Judge, which is kind of a stretch, but I think it can be done. We appeared Tuesday in front of Judge Beeger. Judge Beeger wanted a stipulation and wanted to service a process when they handed him the summons. He wanted that verified by the process service, so everything was kosher, and reset it. He also indicated we might want to file a emergency order. I talked to the man who served the special process service. He did everything right. We'll give him the affidavit, and in a couple of three weeks, I think we'll get a judgment where we can deal with the dogs in adoption. But that's where we are at this point. I did want to report because the cost of those dogs is over $40,000 at this point for all those months of services. So we want to get them out of there. We've only got one kennel left that we can use. So I got 13 dogs to eat. They're beautiful, big dogs that are wonderful, but we need to get them out of our, we need to get them out of our bounds, get them adopted, so we can get more dogs in there if we need. That's all I have to report.
Thank you for the report. I agree, we can only take 15 dogs. I went down there and saw those pit bulls in their puppy stage, but they're big puppies. But I do appreciate our, thank you for that commendation for our animal shelter, because that was one of the things we talked about last week with the euthanization process, and how some places will do it in three days, three to five days of being dropped off.
I think as your nation, you're not going to be able to make a report to John, then we go.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our boards, commissions, and liaison reports. There was not a park board meeting, so we'll move on to planning zoning, that will be briefed by Councilman Hyatt.
Planning and zoning commission, we had a meeting on May 9, 2023. Those in attendance were Twyla Corry, Yvonne Reeves-Chang, Bob Hyatt, Abby Haasid, Mark Cortezini, Jeremy Nichols, city staffer Nathan Carman, Miriam Jones. Guest were Jake LaBota and Mary Shawn Wilson. Absent were Scott Owen. It's called by order by Twyla Corry at 5:30 PM. A quorum was pressed. Approval of minutes, Twyla Corry put forth the meeting minutes from November 2, 2022 for approval. Yvonne Reeves-Chang made the motion to approve the minutes. Motion was seconded by Bob Hyatt. The motion passed unanimously. Open public hearing. The public hearing was opened at 5:30 PM to consider a rezoning request from R1, single-family residence, to R3, multi-family residential for high-density residential use at 512 Main Street, Waynesville, Missouri. Jake LaBota, property owner of 512 Main Street, stated that the rezoning for the property is needed because it has been in ISO for the past 20 years. There are three lots at 512 Main, and instead of doing three different buildings on each lot, Mr. LaBota would like to build two duplexes, which would allow more space and parking. Access to the duplexes would be through Oak Street. Later, we had a closed public hearing with no further comments. Twyla Corry closed the public hearing at 5:34 PM. Bob Hyatt made a second, to send the zoning request to the city council for final approval. Abby Haasid seconded the motion, all in favor. With no further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:36 PM. Next meeting scheduled for June 13, 2023 at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hyatt? That brings us to a proposed ordinance, HB 2023-14.
First reading, an ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from R1, single-family residential, to R3, multi-family residential for property located at 512 Main Street in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from R1, single-family residential, to R3, multi-family residential for property located at 512 Main Street in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date.
I'll take a motion. Motion by Mr. Connolly, seconded by Mr. Rice. Discussion.
I'm curious, does there going to be adequate parking for the development?
Yes, based off of the design that was done, this was supposed to add parking and make better use of the property.
So that's wrong with the term. Like on the Main Street, the Parabellum, is either, or called, you know, three, just a...
I think it was three, there were three lots, they're going to turn it into two lots, put two duplexes on there, so there should be sufficient parking there.
All right. Roll call.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Standing committee reports, we'll start with the utility by Mr. Connolly.
Well, the utility committee met on May 1 at 3:30 PM. Myself, Conley, Rice, and the mayor, along with the staff, John Doyle, Tracy York, Miriam Jones, Dan Sheldon, Joe York, and our visitor, Mr. Brown. We called over at 3:30 to approve the minutes. Selected the chairman for the next year, and Mr. Rice proposed that I be the chairman, and I seconded that. All were in favor. We talked about a letter to the sewer district notifying of the price increase, and we have a letter, we had a letter drafted, and it was sent to the sewer board by certified mail, and one of them, the gang was first, they would be, hey, hey, Ray, we talked about the subdivision improvement program. We suspended it temporarily last month, actually, and it turns out we have a little bit of room in there, so the committee voted to reopen that. Dollar General utilities are in place. Building was supposed to be here by the 12th, but it obviously hasn't made it yet. Perimeter health service, electric transformers set on a wooden platform, they have three transformers sitting up there, but it is a very old and very antiquated system, and the city would like to replace that with a transformer on the ground. And it's on a cost-year basis, that was approved. We looked at, got our first look at cell tower ordinance, waiting on the lawyer to tell us what we did wrong and did right. Natural gas department has been working on installing main gas lines, continues with the annual walkings. We put the gas line to check for leaks, keeping up with daily water orders and dig rates. The electric department, Mr. Sheldon stated we had three power outages, two street lights, four trees, seven miscellaneous, three new services, one service upgrade, and two fixed yards for the month of April. Major highlights for April included work on Robins Phase 2, work on Mesa and Lovist that, work on the new Dollar General. We changed out a red tag pole on Bell and installed a new service off that pole. Single-phase reclosure saved three power outages. We had a need for a closed session, so we went into closed session at 4:34 and came out at 4:56, had no further business. Next meeting is June 5 at 3:30.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Connolly?
And we have two resolutions.
All right, so we have two resolutions, proposed resolutions 04-23 and 05-23. Please read the resolution for 04-23.
A resolution reinstating the subdivision improvement program.
Any discussion? I entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Liberty, seconded by Mr. Hyatt. Roll call.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed resolution 05-23. Please read.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator to secure funding through the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for leg service line funding fixing an effective date.
Discussion. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Connolly, seconded by Mr. Rice. Roll call.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
If we move on to economic development by Mr. Rice.
Yes, the Economic Development and Governmental Affairs Committee meeting came to order at 5:00 PM on May 1. The guests were Mayor Shawn Wilson, Randy Brown, Dr. Jerry Brown, and Mark Sheridan. We had citizen comment by Dr. Jerry Brown, asked what the billboard was going to cost and where it would be located. Doug Potts stated that it is on I-44 West, left-hand reading. It's a 30 by 40-foot sign. The cost is $9,600 for 13 months. This includes installation, design, and print. The contract is through Links Media. Dr. Brown asked how much the green space next to the Dollar General would cost the city. John Doyle stated that the city currently does not own it, so it hasn't cost anything yet. There won't be a legal on it, on the property until construction is over because the developers are using this area for their, the city has an interest in the space, and the developers will sell to the city for some consideration of $10. Councilman Farnum commented that it was going to be a dollar, but the law has changed, so it's now $10. So there's a rumor out there it's millions, it's just $10. The city has an interest in the space, we already talked about that. Mr. Brown, or Dr. Brown requested information on the setback requirements for historic 66 corridor. John Doyle stated that he would get in that information. We went on to approve the minutes from the April 3 meeting. We selected the committee chair. Mr. Farnum, in motion to keep me as chairman, was passed. We discussed a business spotlight for May, which is Margers Head Shed, and Margers Head Shed has been around a long time, so it's worth it to see that. We discussed a small business renovation demolition grant program. Mr. Potts stated that he received six completed applications so far for the small business grant. The program has a total of $50,000 in ARBO funding to disperse. Mr. Potts recommended approving all six applicants for $5,000 each. There are currently four applications pending for next month. Some are not completed correctly, so he was to wait for those to be completed before bringing them forward to the committee. He basically agreed that $5,000 for each business would be great. However, business graphics, Councilman Farnum staying from that vote because he has stern litigation with them, so we hope to approve that one next month. Councilman Farnum made a motion to approve Odyssey Scuba boat docks, Piney River taproom, Weekend Development LLC, Parabellum slash J U L LLC, for again, $5,000 each. That motion passed. We discussed a small business enhancement program update. Mr. Potts stated that within two months of this grant being available, it's already out of funding. Funds are starting to be distributed to businesses that submitted applications and were approved. These businesses are listed in March and April's meeting minutes. Went on to discuss tourism asset development grant. Mr. Potts applied for this grant for the mitigation of Nichols Apartments, requesting $500,000. There were over 240 applicants, and unfortunately, ours did not get selected. On the I-44 billboard, Mr. Potts stated that he has been searching for a billboard since he was hired. Billboards have been hard to come by, and once this one became available, he did not want to wait to pass it up. Already has an idea what to put on it. It's a great advertising spot. There's a map provided to show the location of the billboard. Went on to talk about the CoStar six-month trial. Mr. Potts stated that the CoStar is the most powerful real estate application that lists properties at a national level. Mr. Potts has a six-month free trial and hopes to get the city more visibility during this time period. Discuss some special events, Freak and Fest, CASA, 3V3 soccer tournament, and upcoming is Kisses Park Day, June 3, Juneteenth, celebration on June 19, and the Cape Street Cruisers comes down on June 23 through the 25th. Having no further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:25 PM, and the next scheduled meeting will hold June 5 at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Are there any questions for Mr. Rice? All right, we will move on to roads and grounds by Councilman Farnum.
Roads and grounds committee met on May 2 at 4:00 PM. We were called to order at 4:00. We had a couple of citizens that wanted to addresses. After the meeting was called to order, Joseph Mott grew up drive, stating that his road was paved in 2010, and the culvert was crushed, and the ditch had went away. This has caused the roadway and yard to flood with cranks. He would like this to be addressed. Mr. Mott also... Mr. Mott also requested the street sign replaced at Rudolph Drive. The street foreman, Jason Chapman, will check out Rudolph Drive and follow up with committee, Mr. Mott. Chairman Farnum amended the agenda to include selecting the committee chair. Councilman Conley made a motion to keep Farnum as chairman. Councilman Liberty, second motion passed. Next action with the approval of the minutes, Councilman Liberty made a motion to approve the minutes on April fourth. Council Conley, second motion, motion passed. One ninety-seven sunset event legal description, providing for the evening at one ninety-seven sunset. Next step, send a legal to Plaskett County extract. Evening will be specific to one ninety-seven sunset. And all maintenance will be paid for by the owner of that address. The city will not be responsible for any type of maintenance. Next citizen, Monica Tremant, I don't know if she's still together in Montana. She's interested in purchasing lot one on Barkley Drive from the city. She currently owns lots two and three, would like to buy this lot to the privacy of the office. Mr. Doyle would like to research and see if there's any deed restrictions on the lot before moving forward with the sale. He would also like to look at providing potential aidments for a turnaround spot for emergency vehicles in Snow House. Breptiteer streetlights, that is on our agenda. Citizen Vandy Williams attended city council meeting, requesting streetlights and Breptiteers. Mr. Doyle stated the electric system is serviced by Leclerc Electric. The city would have to reach House Two Leclerc and see what kind of car infrastructure it is and what the cost for those streetlights would be. Next, Mr. Jason Chapman gave his updates, stated that two new one-way signs have been placed on the block. The street department is getting busy with Mr. Rowland's subdivision in Phase Two. He painted parking spots downtown and if you go to the post office or courthouse, you can definitely see the correct banner. Then the street sweeping, calling rob, cleaning ditches, and patch three spots, which we approved. Have no further business, meeting adjourned at four thirty, and the next scheduled meeting is June sixth at four P M.
Thank you, Ms. Farnum. Are there any questions for Mr. Farnum? All right, we'll move on to police committee by Ms. Liberty.
The meeting was called to order at three thirty. Citizen Randy Brown wanted to give a shout out for police department for addressing an issue that he had. There was a resident with an old refrigerator that had mold growing in it. He contacted the police department and the owner had it removed within a few hours. Approval of minutes, Councilman Conley made a motion to approve April sixth meeting minutes. Councilman Hyatt, seconding the motion, motion passed. Select committee chair, Councilman Hyatt made a motion to select myself as chairman. Councilman Conley apprehensively stepped in the motion. Enterprise fleet vehicles, vehicle equipment, quotes, Mr. Doyle discussed. Enterprise fleet management program that the city is part of, two police vehicles were recently received through enterprise. Quotes provided for cost to fully equip police vehicles. ARPA funds, office furniture, six office chairs were needed for the police department and they were purchased and provided. Fire department update, fire chief Shemper stated they're waiting for tags to come in before proceeding with a fire hydrant testing. You've already been briefed on different activities coming up. There was a need for closed session. Councilman Conley made a motion to enter closed session. Councilman Hyatt, seconding the motion, committee entered closed session at three forty-one. Came back in the open session at four forty-one, the meeting was adjourned at four forty-one. Next meeting, June first, two thousand twenty-three, at three thirty P M, all are welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Liberty. Are there any questions for police committee?
I would have had, the fire department is actually doing the fire hydrant testing now, or today. When they started, but I saw them today doing some, the tags came in.
Good deal. All right, thank you. We'll move on to finance and human resource committee, beginning by Mr. Doyle.
Finance and human resources committee was held May fourth. Present were Chairman Amanda Corin, Councilman Davis, absent was Councilwoman Treaty Deals, staff president John Doyle, Amber Box, Michelle Brown. No guests were present and Daryl Marina was there with the media. The meeting was called to order at five oh three and a forum was established. The election of the committee chair, Councilman Corin was selected as the committee chairman. No citizens comments. Committee approved the minutes and review of the bills, committee approved paying the bills. The cash flow account status and end of year budget review, committee reviewed the city's cash flow reports, bank account status and year-to-date budget. The city has completed thirty-three percent of the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year with expenses ending at thirty-eight percent and revenues at thirty-four percent. City bank accounts have a total of six million three hundred fifteen thousand five hundred seventy dollars in restricted funds, reserve funds, and usable monies. Westgate community improvement district update, the committee reviewed the CID sales tax collection. Again, it was stated that McDonald's is slated for a renovation that would affect the two thousand twenty-three totals while it's out of operation during this renovation. ARPA projects monthly updates. It was stated that the new small business enhancement program has received several applications and all thirty thousand dollars have been granted. Businesses awarded include Piney River Tap Room, Odyssey Scuba, Puppy Dogs, Jewel LLC, Parabellum, and We Can Development LLC. We've also spent money on new office chairs for the police department through the ARPA funds. The next project on tap will be at the animal shelter for renovations and upgrades at the Lea Dome. A marijuana tax was discussed and stated, basically, the city does not currently have a marijuana dispensary and would not benefit from the passage of this tax at this time. The discussion involved how much to place on the ballot, when to run it on the ballot, and whether to earmark the funds for a specific purpose. If approved by council, ballot language must be filed no later than May thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Councilman Davis stated that emergency services are the major departments that will be affected by the legalization. After discussion, it is decided that emergency services are to most likely place the tax funds will be used, but not officially earmarked, so it can be used for other projects for needs in the future if necessary. Councilman Corin made a motion to forward an ordinance establishing ballot language to collect a marijuana tax of three percent on the August ballot to city council for final approval. Motion was seconded by Councilman Davis and it was passed unanimously. Subdivision improvement program was discussed and how the program had temporarily been closed to allow for the existing projects to get more complete, maybe not completed, but more complete. Currently, there are interests by developers to reopen the S I P and accommodations for additional subdivisions. We have evaluated this commitment and recommend opening the S I P utilizing the two thousand twenty-one C O P funds that the city currently have for this program. Roads and grounds committee have submitted this to the city council for final approval, which we have obviously just discussed. In other business, city hall will be closed on Monday, May twenty-ninth in accordance with Memorial Day. And mid-year budget reviews and adjustments will begin in July. There was a need for closed session in accordance with R S M O six ten point two one, one and two. Councilman Davis moved to go into closed session for that purpose and was seconded by Councilwoman Corin. Unanimous vote to enter closed session at five thirty-one. The committee returned to open session at five fifty-two P M and the meeting was adjourned at five fifty-two P M. Coming out of that committee was a proposed ordinance for the marijuana tax to be ran on the ballot and the verbiage of that on the ballot. And also an ordinance for the purchase of certain real property located in the city of Wayneso.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by council? All right, Ms. York, can you please read the proposed ordinance H B twenty twenty-three dash one five?
An ordinance of the city of Wayneso, Missouri imposing a local sales tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of three percent. Pursue it to the authority granted by Article fourteen, section two point six five of the Missouri Constitution and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for approval at an election to be held on the eighth day of August, two thousand twenty-three. Second reading, an ordinance of the city of Wayneso, Missouri imposing a local sales tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of three percent. Pursue it to the authority granted by Article fourteen, section two point six five of the Missouri Constitution and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for approval at an election to be held on the eighth day of August, two thousand twenty-three.
Discussion? All right, call for a motion for this ordinance.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Farnum, second by Mr. Rice, roll call.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. York, can you read the H B twenty twenty-three dash one five, one six?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator to execute documents for the purchase of certain property located within the city limits of city of Wayneso, fixing an effective date. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator to execute documents for the purpose, for the purchase of certain property located within the city limits of the city of Wayneso, fixing an effective date.
Discussion? Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Conley, second by Mr. Hyatt, roll call vote.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our last report for this evening is Wayneso St. Roberts Joint Airport by Ms. Liberty.
The attendees were Chairman Mayor George Larson, Vice Chairman City Administrator John Doyle, Anita Ivey, myself, Bill Taylor, Randy Beck, and John Moore. Staff members, Merriam Jones, and Mike Guy. Guests were Alan Mall, Rena Lozern, Lozerni? Ryan Orton, Aaron Youngkin, Don Payne, Dorsey Newcomb, Walter Matil, Carol Pruitt, Martha Miller, and Asher Piercy. Vice Chairman John Doyle called the meeting to order at three o'clock. I made a motion to approve the meeting minutes, seconded by Randy Beck, motion passed. Budget was provided to the board, budget's tracking at thirty-three percent for the year with revenues at fifteen percent and expenses at eighteen percent. John Moore made an up motion to approve the budget. Mayor George Larson seconded the motion, budget approved. Airport managers' report, Mike Guy stated fuel sales for April are extremely good. A lot of military aircraft have been fueling up. The Vider route system for fuel tanks that was destructed by lightning last year is finally coming in and will be installed. Mountain Airlines update, Corolla Pruitt provided the update, stated everything was good. Matt Chavet was unable to attend the meeting because he was traveling. Burns McDonald engineering update, NEPA reevaluation, and fireman on baseline survey. Ryan Orton stated that he was still waiting on the responses from Port Leonwood. The scope of the terminal is underway, airport terminal project. We have two meetings. One of them is Airport Terminal Project, which we have a follow-up meeting, May eleventh, at one o'clock, Wayneso City Hall. And the second meeting is the Airport Board Meeting, which is Tuesday, May twenty-third, at three P M at St. Roberts at Municipal Center. S O P marketing report, Erin Youngkin provided marketing report. Requested, she was requesting images from the airport each month to create more original content for use in the Instagram. Explore Port Leonwood will be conducting Facebook, Instagram contest this summer. And Erin will work to share content and engage with the contest in the next two to three months. This will help reach more people and get them engaged with our content. And that is that, Mayor.
All right, thank you for the board. Any questions for Ms. Liberty? City administrators' report.
City administrators' report for May, basically recaps a lot of the things we have discussed. Plaskett County nine-one-one communications dispatch agreement slash contract. Again, this is an agreement and contract that affects other Dina's hobbies within the county. Tyce did a very good job representing the city of Richland and actually discussing the circumstance. I included in my report some details, financial details of where the agreement currently is and then the three options provided in the proposed agreement by E nine-one-one. The I forty-four billboard, again, that's a linked media billboard located along the I forty-four corridor. This would be a great opportunity to provide advertisement possibilities for the city to commuters. This is, I think, a good opportunity to, you know, attract maybe additional travelers to our city. The Dollar General utilities, they have been installed complete by our staff and are currently waiting on the construction of the building to connect those services. And again, perimeter health services upgrade. This is the last type of system in our system. This is an older electric service that we are, I am familiar with three other ones in the city that have been replaced over time and this is the last one of that type that I'm aware of, that type and size that I'm aware of in the city. So very excited about the joint venture with that. Our staff is able to provide the construction on reconnection during non-peak operational hours for them. So it'll be a very nice cost-share opportunity for both the city and perimeter health. Upcoming events, first of all, I have a graduating daughter, senior this year. So I want to congratulate all the graduates of two thousand twenty-three. I know Wayneso's held their ceremonies and the last, last day of school, I believe, is Friday. So, and many other schools have already had their last day of school. But again, congratulations to all the graduates. Old Sellers Day on July twenty-seventh through thirtieth, Memorial Day. City Hall will be closed on Monday, May twenty-ninth. Cape State Cruisers is scheduled June twenty-two through twenty-five and Juneteenth. On June nineteenth, city hall will be closed as well. And then something coming up very soon is a Kids to Park, a very successful event in Howard Park, and that'll be June third.
All right, thank you. Any questions for super administrator? All right, council comics, we'll start with Mr. Farnum.
Mayor, we always talk about something going on in the city, our comments. Tonight, I'm going to bring up something different. The last day or so, we lost two musical giants, in my opinion. Miss Tina Turner passed away and Sheldon Reynolds passed away. Miss Tina Turner passed away, and Sheldon Reynolds passed away. A lot of people won't know who Sheldon Reynolds is, but he was with the Colodors Musical Group, and then was with the London Fire, very talented out there. Sad to see them both go, so I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, when you say your prayers, add a little something to their balance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Farnum. Mr. Hyatt?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank our special guest tonight, which Ty Smith, for his positive comments made on the animal shelter, and Keith Pritchard, thanks for coming and sharing your comments on the CASA. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Yes. I just got that feedback, so. I just want to thank Mayor Wilson for doing such wonderful jobs, Mayor. I've received several positive comments about him lately, that's always good to hear. I also want to thank you for sending out regular email briefings to the council. This definitely helps us do our job, representing the city beautifully, and just wanted you to know you're appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Liberty?
I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Keith Pritchard, who was, it was communicated at the gala that he was very instrumental in the success of the CASA. And I talked to several of the representatives, the aides to the Secretary of the Army, they were very impressed with the things that Mr. Pritchard got done, and they were very impressed with Fort Leonardwood and the cities. The cities, especially Wayneso, was pointed out as being very receptive to them, and they really enjoyed it. And of course, that may have been just because they knew us, Councilman and Mayor Pro Tem from Wayneso, but they communicated that to me, and I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Keith Pritchard was recognized as being very instrumental in that being very successful. And I thank you, Mr. Pritchard.
Well, it's World Day Weekend, if you're gonna be traveling, like I am, fortunately, need to be safe out there, because there are a lot of people on the road who probably shouldn't have driver's licenses, to be honest with you. Also, I'd like to, you know, remind people, grass grows, you know, especially with all the rain we have. Some of our yards are beyond the scope of high. I've seen a place where we had grass over three feet tall. You know, it's almost like a harshest. When you live in the city, it's your job to keep your property looking reasonably nice, because if it isn't, it affects the property value of your neighbors, and most neighbors would not be happy.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. I just have a few things. One is, I also echo the sentiments everybody said about what was going on with the CASA, with our graduates, but just want to bring up that we do have a veterans' memorial ceremony in the memorial cemetery here, right outside of Fort Leonardwood on Paula Road, that's on Monday at thirteen-hundred, so if you want to attend, I would suggest you do show up around twelve, fifteen, to make sure you can get shuttled over to the site, because there's limited parking, but I do want to make sure we put that invite out there, and I say thirteen-hundred and one. Okay, one P M. One P M., so just come out and join us on that day. And again, I want an invitation for the Kids to Park Day next Saturday. This is an opportunity for our local businesses and organizations to share what programs they have for the entire summer for our youth. We plan to have a helicopter in the park, the Jaws of Life demonstration by the Fire Department, and the search dog rescue by the Wayneso P D. And we're gonna be giving away some bikes, we're gonna give away some, they're gonna raffle off a remote control car from the R C local business, and that, it goes about thirty miles an hour. I always throw that out there, in case somebody wants to speed, they can do it with the remote control car instead of their own vehicle. But thank you for your support, and this meeting is adjourned.